Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this work session of the Washington County Board of Education. We're meeting this afternoon in work session to discuss the board's 2023 Maryland Legislative Session, our program, our legislative program for this session. We have six members present. Mr. Stalfer isn't with us this afternoon. And we don't take formal action, as you know, in a work session. I will be working to have consensus if there's any changes to be made in what you find here. We have a business meeting agenda item planned where we will adopt our legislative program, and that is scheduled for November 1st. So you should have received as resource materials a copy of the board's policy BJ, which is School Board Legislative Program. You should have received the calendar for the legislative session for 2023 and a copy of the proposed 2023 Legislative Program. So we have a half an hour for our discussion this afternoon. So let's begin with looking at the core values. The core values are adequate and equitable local and state funding. Local control and mandates should be limited and fully funded by the state. They're explained in detail when your resource materials. Have any questions or concerns about the core values?
How about some shout-outs and a hooray?
Shout-outs and a hooray?
While the continued governance authority for local boards was like, yes. I was very glad to see that. And I did have a question. The charter schools, who funds the charter schools? The local, the LEA, or the state?
I do not believe the local has any funding responsibility for charter schools.
But we do have to provide them transportation funding.
So it's really state?
Well, we almost act, to the best of my knowledge, we almost act like a pass-through. Again, whether they, for certain, they do have to, we have to provide transportation funding regardless if they actually provide transportation or not. The board has to take official action on approving a charter school or not. And we do, there are parts of it where we do act as fiscal hosts. I have Mr. Prue waiting in the wings in case there's additional information I missed. I phoned a friend and needed financial assistance.
My knowledge, we've not had a charter school in Washington County, too.
My knowledge is correct. And I'm not well-versed in this area, but what I would think would be the caution to the board is it will look a lot like how pre-K funding is being handled under the blueprint, where the funding will come into the Board of Education, but it will just simply pass through us to the other agency. The risk to a charter school is it's a reduction in your K-12 enrollment, which has then a subsequent reduction to the amount of money you have available because your enrollment will go down as they enroll in the charter school. Does that make sense? You know, our enrollment, let's say, you know, let's use big round numbers. You know, we're funded at 21,000 students, and a charter school comes onboard and they're able to get 100 students in their first year. Our funding drops down to 20,900 students, both for state and local funding. So it is indeed a reduction in our funding. Now, there's a corresponding reduction in numbers of students, but it is a reduction in our funding.
Got it.
We're not paying for any, anything for the charter school. We're not paying for, other than transportation.
Other than the transportation.
Not paying salaries, we're not paying materials.
Correct. They have to be self-sustaining, but they essentially garner a portion of what would be our state and local allocation.
They reduce our allocation.
And I was really thrilled that we will oppose any new unfunded mandates.
Well, I have some additional information. The Board of Education will annually determine the appropriate amounts of local, state, and federal funding to be distributed to the public charter school, with the amounts dispersed to other public schools in Washington County are comparable. So the board does have say in what those allocations are. As I said earlier, my understanding is we act as a pass-through entity, although they have to be self-sustaining, any state, federal, or local money that they're receiving does have to come through the Board of Education for dispersment and approval, which is why the Board of Ed has to approve charter school applications. I know also when they apply for grants, the Board of Ed has to sign off on those as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. So do we have consensus to move ahead core values?
Yeah, I did have one thing, and I don't know that this is a core value or something. I know we've kind of discussed it in the past about school safety. I would really like to see more support for our SROs. I don't know where that would fall under, if it'd be a core value, if it'd be on the watch list or whatever. I just want to, want that to be something that we try to push for as well.
Mr. Evans, if on the very last page, under the 2023 Legislative Watch List, we do have as a priority that we're watching, and that is funding for safe and secure learning, and that includes SROs, the importance, yeah. Well, it's the very end of it, so.
So again, are we good to move core values ahead?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's move on then to legislative priorities. Mrs. Ram, did you want to speak to the one priority that we've identified?
And the Time of Care Act of 2022 is essentially a Maryland paid FML, or paid FMLA leave. The bill itself is wonky, not a great term, but the fiscal note has a lot more information because the regulations that'll come out will help to at least hopefully interpret the meaning behind the bill. This is going to be a very heavy financial burden for the school system in excess, the school's contribution of at least a million. So it's on our priority list, as well as other public institutions are also watching this. Essentially, starting October of 2023, at an amount yet to be determined, we will have to contribute as an employer, X percentage of an employee's salary, up to 7%, I believe. And then the employee has to do the same. What the program is designed is if you have more than 15 employees, you have to participate in this program. It's designed to be run concurrent with FMLA, but designed that if you do not have paid leave available to you, then you would apply to receive this. And it has to do with care for a newborn child, adopt a child, your own illness, caring for someone else. For the public institution, much like us, our employees are given paid sick time as well as vacation time. So they have access to paid leave, assuming they haven't exhausted it. As well as, our various groups also have sick leave bank. So our employees have access to a lot of leave. So it's likely we will be contributing a fair amount, both the employee and employer. And I'm especially concerned on our, some of our lower-paying staff, up to 7% of their check is a heavy lift for them, especially if you're paycheck to paycheck, and now we're taking even more out of your check. So we start contributing in October of 2023, and then they'll do a two-year feasibility study to see if it's even sustainable and pay out, and application wouldn't even begin until 2025 if it's sustainable. If at some point, from what I'm reading, they deem it not sustainable, they'll either increase the rate or scrap the program. But there isn't any information about returning money that's already been paid in to support a program that's potentially not feasible. So it's a significant concern for all public sector, especially school systems, because of the hefty price tag, as well as the other laws that the school system has to follow, Maryland laws in providing leave, paid leave options, as well as the amount we already do contribute. So I have a concern, especially in our ESP staff and as well as budgeting. We're looking at, last time I talked to David, a little over a million-dollar lift annually to sustain this program from our standpoint. So it's a big concern we should be watching. I'm hopeful there'll be amendments to exempt, hopefully, public sector. From reading it, it really seems to be targeted at those that don't offer any sort of paid sick leave or FMLA, and that seems to be what it's geared at. But also individuals who are unable to work due to illness can still apply for unemployment benefits, and then they can't receive the benefit of this. So I'm still trying to figure out what subset of the population this really benefits, but in my opinion, it's not the school system employees.
So, Mrs. Ram, given that this is a proposed priority for our board, and I'm reading at the second page, on the second page, that we want to encourage and support efforts to exempt local boards of education from this program, we would be asking our delegation to sponsor perhaps a bill that would exempt us and all other local boards, or at least support any legislation that should be put forward by another legislator?
I think we would support. I know this is on MABE's radar as well. There are a number from other school board attorneys I have spoken with, and this is hot on the radar, school systems as well, in some of the articles I've been reading, I think, as well as other public entities. So I, we would strongly support it. I would encourage us to make a recommendation to have our delegation bring forth to allow public entities to be exempt from it as an exemption to the bill. There's no regulations yet, and so there's still room and opportunity for modifications to the, amendments to the existing legislation.
Thank you. So thoughts with regard, or any questions for Mrs. Ram regarding that priority?
I would agree we should bring it up with the delegation and see if we can, either they join a bill as a cosponsor or even lead the effort.
Yeah, I would imagine the county, and I haven't spoken to anyone in the county commissioners or in the county's offices, but I imagine it's going to be just as much of a heavy lift for them as well. And I don't imagine they want to raise taxes to be able to pay for this, so.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on then to, unless anyone else has a suggestion for legislative priority, these are the ones coming to you from the Legislative Response Team. Anyone else have a thought? Otherwise, we'll move to the watch list. Yes, Mr. Guest?
Following up on Daryl's conversation concerning our SOLs, would it be advantageous for us to move the, from the watch up to a priority of getting some type of legislation written that the state funds the SORs?
SORs.
So that they get, instead of just having it on the watch list, that we're saying, we want you to fund that for Washington County and all public schools of the state of Maryland. I mean, now's the time that it's, it's in, you know, everybody's radar. So maybe now that someone needs to step up and say, we want the schools to be safe, now it's time for you to legislate to get us, you know, and maybe they water it down and they say, we'll pay for half of it. But maybe we should start saying, we want all of our schools in the state of Maryland to have, if they want, to have, you know, some type of security in all schools. Instead of it being just on a watch list, oh, well, watch and see what you do, maybe we need to take a stand and say, we want you to do this, and we want you to pay for Just thoughts.
I would say to you, we have SROs as a result of legislation, and that legislation has dictated.
But we have to pay for it.
We have to pay for it. However, we're paying for it, and with paying for it, we have local control. So they are dictating to us through previous legislation what we have to do with regard to our current SRO program. My thought would be if we ask them to pay for it, are we giving up a piece of our local control to the state, where the state would be totally in control? I mean, I just raised, I just raised that question.
We can ask them not to take the control, that we just, we want them to pay for it, and we continue to control in our public school system for Washington County. Whatever they want to do with any other county, that's up to them. But for us, I think we need to ask, we want total control, but we want you to pay for it. I mean, they, you know, they want our schools to be safe, we want our schools to be safe. Yes, we do, you know, have some in our schools, and we have to pay for it ourselves. But maybe it's time that we ask the state to say, hey, you need to step up, too. I don't know what kind of control that they can control, you know, I mean, what more would they ask for the counties to?
Right now, I think they specify the kind of training we're supposed to have, they, they're pretty, what's the word I want to, with the language that says adequate, you know, that kind of is nebulous. They don't specify a certain number of SROs that you need to have, or student ratio number. So that's nebulous.
Adequate coverage, something like that?
Adequate coverage, I believe, is the language.
That's what our legislators could do, is to fight for us to have, you know, control in our own counties.
So, Mr. Prue?
So I want to think through a couple of things. First, I think, Mrs. Williams, I think you're accurate. The bill from several years ago provided for adequate coverage and provided that the local school system and their police agencies would determine what adequate coverage looks like in their community. So it is different statewide. So I would think from a state perspective, if they were going to pay, I think they would, they would definitely want control over what that adequate coverage looks like, and I'm not sure we necessarily want that either. They do provide, through the Maryland Center for School Safety, they do provide what's called an adequate coverage grant. It does not pay for SROs, but it does, at least not long-term. It can, it can pay for an SRO, let's say, first year, but beyond that, the school system has to be prepared, or the county, depending on the funding source across the state, has to be prepared to pick it up beyond that. We typically have used that adequate coverage grant to pay for additional services, so evening athletic events, parent nights, school concerts, those are the types of things we typically use. Overtime coverage that we might need, or hotspots that just need additional coverage. One of the things we could potentially ask for, just like so many other things in the blueprint, where there's an allocation per student, would the state be willing to provide an allocation per student for school safety and security? Then the county then determines how they want, what there's, so that we maintain control of what our security program looks like, and we can go big if we want to. The state would fund, hey, we're going to fund this amount. If you want this amount, the rest is on you, but we're going to fund a certain amount. It could be asked for, say, on a per capita, per student. In the same way in the blueprint, in the coming years, we're, have to carve out money out of our foundation for technology initiatives. The same thing could be done with safety and security, and that gives the state a little bit of stake in that local game, but keeps the local control that I think we all want in our school security program. Is that helpful?
Yes, yes. Any other questions or further discussion?
So how do we, how do we move forward on that, other than watching it?
Well, what I'd recommend is it wouldn't be a watch, it would be moved to a legislative priority. We could, what we would consider doing, we being the board, is to make a request of the local delegation to bring forth legislation that modifies our student funding, as Mr. Prue suggested, as an allegation, allo-
Allocation.
Allocation.
Counselor.
I can't read my own writing. Allocation per student for safety and security, and therefore, as our student population would increase, then it'd be a bigger allocation, and we'd receive more adequate funding to be able, to your point. So we would request that they bring forth or sponsor some legislation. Safety and security is a hot-button issue in all the schools. Other school systems, the school system itself doesn't pay for their SROs, the county does, but still the county at that point also is probably concerned about some of that funding. So I think it's both maybe a watch as well as a priority, because there may be other delegations or school systems that are looking for something similar that we could tack onto. So it's definitely worth a conversation, so I would recommend that we make a, we add it as a priority, and it's funding for safety and security, and then we could add some language about increasing allocation per student.
I would also think, to piggyback on that, in terms of thinking about support for a legislative initiative of that nature, you likely would have MAKO, Maryland Association of Counties, as a partner, because in most jurisdictions, that funding is coming out of county funds. So I think, I think MAKO would be supportive, because it's, then becomes money that the counties could reallocate to other services within their jurisdiction as well.
So, Mrs. Ram, you're recommending that we make a request to the delegation to look at crafting a bill that would speak to the state providing an allocation per student to be used for school safety and security?
That's an accurate summary, yes.
Okay, and would your office be able to craft that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That moves it to legislative priority.
If that, if that is the consensus of this group, we can do that.
Yes.
Is that what we want to do? Okay, so we're going to move that to a priority. And while we have, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, we have a watch list to discuss next. We want to keep safe and secure learning environments as an item on our watch list as well, should there be any changes to the Safe to Learn Act of 2018, or any additional legislation that would affect the safety and security of our schools, correct? So we'll have it as both a legislative priority and the watch list. Is there anything else that we want to add as a priority? We have two thus far. Okay, then let's move to the watch list. On our watch list, we have the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, Free and Appropriate Education, which is the burden of proof, and free shifting, fee shifting, not free shifting, fee shifting, and then to contest any further increases in the transfer of pension costs to our school systems, to our county, in addition to the safe and secure learning environment. Mrs. Ram, did you want to speak to any of those, or do any of my colleagues have questions about any of those on the watch list?
I just wonder if anyone has any questions. It's very similar to items we've had last year. I guess I will say a couple of things. The burden of proof and fee shifting, that wasn't passed last year, it comes up every year. In terms of special ed costs, we really want to watch that one. We want to continue our collaborative spirit of trying to resolve IEP issues. Not that we can't handle due process, but it's often a better outcome for the student if we can all work together, as well as you're less likely, parents be less likely to do that, as well as, again, a financial lift on the school system.
Are we good with the items, the four that we have on the watch list? Is there anything else that you have on your radar screens with regard to?
Nope. It's looking good.
Current legislation, or, not current legislation, current law that we would want to watch for change, or any proposed legislation that we would want to watch? No?
Is this calendar that we have here, is that set in stone, or is that more tentative?
Well, that's next, that's coming up soon to discuss on our agenda.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. So are we, are we good with the watch list? We have consensus for the watch list? Okay, so we are good with the core values, we're good with the two legislative priorities, and we are good with the watch list. Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion of the composition of the Legislative Response Team for this session. Policy BJ speaks to the composition of that team. I'm looking at Policy Statements and Procedures, which is reminumera four, item B. The LRT will be comprised of the Board of Education President, at least one other board member, the Superintendent, and Chief Legal Counsel, or their designee. In no case will more than three board members be appointed to the LRT. So is there anyone interested in serving on the LRT?
I'll do it again.
You would like to do it again?
You and Stan, right? And I'm back up?
Well, it is, according to policy, it is the president, and in the past, Mr. Stalfer as the vice president has volunteered, and while I shouldn't speak for him, I would think that he would want to continue in that role, as he has volunteered to be on the MABE Legislative Committee, so I would think that he would want to continue on the LRT.
Yeah, I'm fine serving, too.
Anyone else have interest?
I'll be an alternate if you need a, someone to-
Okay, so we'll go with the president, the vice president, and Mr. Bickford. We have consensus for that?
Yep.
Yes, and Mrs. Murray has agreed to be the alternate, should we need one. Okay, that brings us to item six, Mr. Evans, which is the calendar, so you have concerns.
No, I don't have concerns, I just wanted to know if I can count on this calendar.
If you can count on it?
Yeah, if this is set in stone or not.
I would say, for sure, we don't, I don't think have firm confirmation about December 7th, correct, Jamie? So that could change. And I think the issue is, because of the election and the confirmation of the election and the certification and all of that, when the delegation will decide they're going to come to Washington County and meet with the different groups that they meet with, which includes our board, so that, that's a date for sure that could change. We have, as I said, on our agenda for November 1st, we have the adoption of our program. I don't see a problem with keeping that date, so I think we're good with that. MABE's Legislative Committee meetings, you see those in yellow, they are all set ahead of time, so, and they're all virtual. And so, you know, Stan is our, Vice President Stalfer is our, well, we've sent his name in. In the past, he has been a member of that legislative committee. I'm assuming he will be reappointed as a member of that committee. But that's not to say that other members can't tune in to watch that. All committee meetings are open, so those are noteworthy dates. They're lengthy, but they're always very informative. It's always a good way to find out what's happening, what has happened.
Mrs. Williams? The MABE Legislative Luncheon and Washington County Board of Education Day in Annapolis, to be determined, are they having that this year, do you know?
The discussion at MABE was they think that they will be back to doing- The discussion at MABE was, they think that they will be back to doing that again this year.
Good, I always enjoyed that.
It, it, it's a TBD until we have confirmation of that. And the other TBD, the governor stated the state, again, I guess that's all contingent on the election, and who's the governor, and what the governor's schedule might be. The delegation, well, I guess the, the coalition itself will decide what their day in Annapolis will be. Typically, it's in March. Jamie, is it early March, mid-March, the end of March typically? Just sometime in March? So some of those dates, I can, I can say are, are firm dates, Mr. Evans, and others, they could change.
That December 7th was the one.
Yep, December 7th, I would, I would put a big, big star by that one. And we'll keep you informed, coming, as soon as we get notification, the board will know. We generally get an email from the delegation.
And in years past, speaking of calendar, we've always had, you know, two reports, well, the board meets twice a month, and reports to the board twice a month, one by our liaison, Artif, and the other by staff. Since we are not using Artif this year, and we're handling everything internally, as you reflect in the calendar, it's my recommendation that we give reports to the board the second meeting in the month, given the timing of the legislative calendar.
So we have consensus that the second meeting in the month is when we'll have our reports? Okay, Mrs. Ram mentioned the fact that we have decided not to have a legislative representative. That's also something that is, you find in policy, that we can designate an individual who may or may not be a member of the board, and as Mrs. Ram said, we've decided that we would handle this internally this year to see how that goes, so. Everyone still in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yep. Anyone else have anything? We've covered all our agenda items. Anything else with regard to the legislative session that you have a question or concern about? If not, we'll end a little past three. Nothing further? Okay, thank you. We'll see you in closed session shortly.